Good evening. It being 7:00 PM on the 12th day of May 2025 in the town of Grafton, I call the annual town meeting to order. My name is Dawn Anderson and I am the town moderator. I respectfully ask that you address me as Madam Moderator. Before I begin, I'd like to do a quick audio test to check the sound in the commons. If you guys could let me know, give me a thumbs up if you can hear me out there. We're good. Excellent, thank you. A few reminders: no food or drink is allowed in the auditorium during the meeting. Shouting or outbursts will not be tolerated at any time. Visitors associated with boards or committees may sit with those boards or committees if they have cleared it with me before the start of the meeting. The upper chamber has been reserved for the students of Grafton Middle School. The last two rows of the main auditorium are for, please leave them for people with mobility issues so that they don't have to make their way down the ramp. If you'd like to speak on an article, please come forward to one of the microphones at the front of the auditorium. Get as close as you can to the microphone. Speak clearly and slowly. State your name and address. And a little tip: don't try and turn around like this to look at everyone because then nobody will be able to hear you. Just speak directly into the microphone. If you are unable to navigate to the microphones, we have two volunteers from the Grafton High School National Honor Society, Johanna and Jocelyn are here. Thank you so much. They have mics. If you need to use one of those mics, just raise your hand, ask for a point of privilege, and they will bring the microphone to you. Okay. A quick reminder that anyone who wishes to speak, ask a question, must direct all their questions through me. That's part of moderating, is that I help navigate so that we aren't having conversations back and forth. And closed captioning for tonight's meeting is provided by GCTV. How are we doing? Good. At the annual town, at the annual meeting of the Massachusetts Moderators Association in the fall of 2024, an initiative was announced, encouraging the support of the semi-quincentennial to celebrate the 250th anniversary of the signing of the Declaration of Independence and the American Revolution. This is intended to be a two-year effort to recognize the defining events of 1775, which led to the signing of the Declaration of Independence in 1776. It was suggested that town moderators share a general statement about this event at the annual town meeting, but we were encouraged to adapt it as needed to the individual history of the town that might be available by local, state, or national resources. To that end, I have spent the last few months doing a little research on Grafton and have learned a few things that I would like to share with you all tonight. Big changes are often precipitated by many small moments. On September 5th, 1774, Captain Luke Drury moderated a Grafton Town Meeting to consider the resolves adopted by the Convention of the Worcester County Committees of Correspondence in response to the Intolerable Acts. There were nine resolves, which ranged from defying the courts established by the recent British laws, to paying debts to avoid having to go before those courts, to preventing riots and maintaining peace. These resolves expressed opposition to the actions of the British Parliament, which undermined the province's charter and imposed a system of tyranny by unanimous vote. The townspeople of Grafton agreed to support these resolves. It is the last two resolutions that I want to recognize tonight. Resolve 8: Town should disregard British law about town meetings and proceed with regular activities. The intolerable acts attempted to limit town meeting to once a year unless it was approved by the governor. This restriction angered the colonists. It was seen as a violation of the colonists' self-governance and fueled resentment towards British rule. Grafton continued to hold town meetings in defiance of the intolerable acts up until April of 1775. A warrant was issued on April 17th, 1775, for a Grafton Town Meeting. The date certain sent for that meeting was April 24th, 1775. It was the last warrant issued in the name of His Majesty, King George III. That meeting never happened. Resolve 9: Committees should prepare for self-defense in case of invasion. Having voted in support of this resolution, when that invasion came, Grafton was ready. This readiness was detailed in the history of Grafton from its early settlement by the Indians in 1647 to the present time, 1879, written by Frederick Clifton Pierce and published July 30th, 1879. I'm going to read from it because it was too beautiful not to share. Darkness closed in upon the country on April 19th, 1775, but it was no night for sleep. Herald's on swift relays of horses transmitted the war message from hand to hand till village repeated it to village. On the morning succeeding the battle, the Massachusetts Committee of Safety addressed the following to the several towns in the state: "We conjure you by all that is dear, by all that is sacred, we beg and entreat, as you will answer to your country, to your conscience, and above all to God Himself, that you will hasten and encourage by all means necessary the enlistment of men to form an army and send them forward to headquarters at Cambridge with that expedition which the vast importance and instant urgency of the affair demands." About noon on the day of the battle, the people of Grafton were thoroughly acquainted with the fact that the British were on the march to Concord to destroy the military stores at that place. These companies comprised nearly the whole efficient male population of the town and included the young and old. The whole strength of the town went out to war. And left none behind but the young, the feeble, and the aged. The citizens of Grafton gathered on the common, and before the setting of the sun, two companies consisting of nearly 100 men were on the march to Cambridge where they arrived the following morning. The fields were deserted, the domestic circle broken up, and places of industry abandoned from this time until the close of the war. Citizens of Grafton were constantly in service. This is why the April 24th meeting never happened. Tonight, we will set the salaries for our elected officials, appropriate the money we need to run the town, and vote on bylaws, but by gathering here together, we also honor and embrace the town meeting of 250 years ago. These were the local democracies that by their nature taught Americans the virtues and responsibilities of self-governance. It was through the conduct of town meetings that the colonial public embraced the inalienable rights of self-determination, independent of the British Empire's control, which in turn sparked a revolt and fueled a revolution. The voices raised, actions taken, financial support committed, and lives and liberties pledged at this and many other town meetings around the Commonwealth remain our worthy heritage. Welcome to Spring Town Meeting. To kick off the celebration of the upcoming semi-quincentennial, I partnered with Grafton Middle School and asked the students to submit designs for a poster promoting Grafton Town Meeting. You may have seen this poster throughout the town and on social media, spreading the word for tonight's meeting, and I hope building interest in our local legislative form of government. I invite the winner, Danica Conley, to the stage to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You may have seated.
In the spring of 2023, at the annual town meeting, the Select Board presented a land acknowledgement to be read at every annual Spring Town Meeting, which I'm honored to share with you tonight. We acknowledge that the land the town of Grafton is located on is the traditional and unceded territory of the Hassanamisco Nipmuck people, who continue to reside on the land today. This acknowledgement is read at the annual town meeting in remembrance that in 1654, the colonial legislature established the third praying village of Hassanamessit, which is known today as Grafton. We denounce the violence of colonialism, which stripped these original stewards of lands that were their ancestral home. We seek to better educate ourselves and honor these lands. We recognize and honor the Nipmuck, who were displaced, and celebrate those who returned and remain today. Let this acknowledgement serve as a reminder for all people when they are enjoying the land, wildlife, and natural beauty of Grafton, of our commitment to being good stewards of the land and supporting the rights and interests of indigenous people. Spring Town Meeting, it's always very exciting. Before we test the electronic voting, I have one more announcement to make. I have been informed that someone left Fall Town Meeting with one of our electronic vote, voting remote controls. I know, I know. One of the key features of the program that we invested in is that it is sequentially numbered, which enables the town of Grafton to share our remote controls with other towns when they expect a large turnout. Not having all of those remote controls makes it hard to share. And as I have mentioned in the past, these don't work anywhere else. I don't know what you're doing with it at home. So, I've been told that if you return it to the municipal center, no questions will be asked. Now, that being said, did everyone get a remote control? Except for the middle school students who should not have a remote control. Okay, we're going to do a quick test. Press 1 for yes. Press 2 for no. And now for some introductions. Over on the table down there, we have our Select Board, Matt Ofton, Craig Daphne, Mark Alamo, Andy Jefferson, Anne Marie Foley, and our Town Administrator, Evan Versat. Assistant Town Administrator, William Blake, running our voting controls. Town Attorney Chris Brown, and one of his colleagues, whose name I apologize, I can't remember. And last but not least, I'd like to introduce to everyone our new town clerk, Amy Berry. Amy is down in the back. All right, we're moving right along. Next week, Grafton Middle School eighth grade students will journey from Grafton all the way down to Washington DC. I invited them here tonight so they could see our legislative branch of government in action before they go down there. I am thrilled to see that so many of them accepted, even if that meant they were playing basketball until literally before the meeting started, and I was handed a basketball to bring inside. I want to remind all the middle school students that you should have signed in. There was a sign-in sheet on the front desk next to Danica's poster. You won't get credit if you don't sign in, so if you haven't signed in, don't leave now, but when you're leaving, make sure you sign your name. You also could have picked up your bingo cards. We already have had quite a few. Checkboxes, and a town meeting guide that gives you a little bit of who's who, what's what, and how we do what we do. And now I'm going to take a little break and drink some water. I'd like to bring our state representative, David Meridian, up to share some information from our Capitol.
Well, good evening, everyone. David Meridian, 8 North Street. Thank you, Madam Moderator. I will try to be very brief because no one wants to hear a legislator speak, but I am going to give the moderator time to take a drink. We've been kind of busy in Beacon Hill recently. We passed a supplemental budget and the state budget, and from that, I just have a couple of very, very brief remarks. We were able to secure $50,000 to help offset special education costs for FY2025 here in Grafton. We were able to secure $40,000 for public safety improvements. We were able to increase the Coming School of Veterinary Medicines line item from $5 million to $6 million, so a $1 million increase, which helps the entirety of our community. And for our superintendents, who are both right here, the UGA number, and for our town moderator, for the UGA number, unrestricted general government aid is $1,925,260. But more importantly, the Chapter 70 number in the House budget for Grafton was $13,539,728. So if you look at that number compared to last year, the Chapter 70 number goes up $443,400, which includes $150 per pupil. So it was a good budget, and we'll certainly try to continue to advocate to bring more money back locally. So I want to thank you for your time. And for one of our superintendents, Dr. Fitzpatrick from BVT, who's retiring this year, thank you for all that you've done to help our communities out. Thank you, everyone.
I now invite our town clerk, Amy Berry, to read the return of the warrant.
Commonwealth of Massachusetts, Town of Grafton, Annual Town Meeting, May 12th, 2025, Warrant. To any of the constables of the Town of Grafton in the county of Worcester, greetings. In the name of the Commonwealth, you are directed to notify and warn the inhabitants for the Town of Grafton qualified to vote in elections and town affairs to meet in the Grafton High School Auditorium at 24 Providence Road on May the 12th day, or on Monday, the 12th day of May 2025 at 7:00 PM and act on the following articles. And you are directed to serve this warrant by posting up an attested copy thereof in some conspicuous place in the town at least 14 days before said meeting. Hereof fail not and make due return of this warrant, with your doing thereon to the town clerk at the time and the place of the meeting as foresaid. Given under the hands on this 15th day of April in the year of the Lord 2025, the Select Board, Town of Grafton, Anne Marie Foley Chair, Andrew Jefferson Vice Chair, Mark Alamo Clerk, Craig Daphne Mark Ofton, I have complied with the requirements of the above warrant and with the Town of Grafton bylaws by posting an attested copy of the warrant in some conspicuous place in the town on the above date. Cynthia J. Ide, Constable of Grafton.
Thank you. Okay. We have two consent agendas on the warrant tonight. To review, a consent agenda's purpose is to act expeditiously on certain types of articles that generate little to no debate and can be addressed by a single vote. Consent Agenda 1 pertains to Articles 1, 2, and 3 in effect the current fiscal year. Having these articles on the annual town meeting warrant eliminates the need for a special town meeting. Consent Agenda 2 pertains to Articles 4 through 14, which affect the next fiscal year. The consent agenda ensures our time is available for discussion of genuine debate. Once the consent motion is made, I will read each article number under that consent agenda. If you wish to hold an article and discuss that individually, call out "hold." I will then ask for a motion on all remaining articles. From there, each article that is held will be addressed in the order it appears on the warrant. Consent Agenda 1. Ms. Foley?
May I just ask a point of order? Could you just give us the tally on the clickers?
I had 182.
Okay, thank you. I move that the town vote to act upon Articles-
Can you get closer?
I move that the town act to vote upon Articles 1, 2, and 3, and that they be passed by consent.
Motion made and seconded. If you wish to hold an article and discuss it individually, call out "hold." Article 1. Article 2. Article 3. Is there any discussion on Consent Motion 1? Hearing none. This consent motion requires a simple majority. All those in favor, press 1. I declare the motion carried, 183 to 2. Consent Agenda 2.
Madam Moderator?
Try again.
Madam Moderator?
Mr. Ofton?
I move that the town vote to act upon Articles 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12, 13, and 14, and that they may be passed by consent.
Motion made and seconded. Before I open the discussion on Consent Agenda 2, I invite the Chair of the Finance Committee to read the State of the Town message.
Good evening. This evening, the Finance Committee is reporting on the State of the Town as we near the end of fiscal year 2025. We're heading into the sixth budget year since the last proposition two and a half override was passed in 2020. The override was expected to last for five fiscal years. Due to diligent efforts by the town and school administrations, we've been able to meet that goal. The town leadership has made the decision to extend this five-year override to a sixth year, but not without consequences. The balanced budget you will be voting on this evening represents an approximately $600,000 cut from level services from the school budget. You will also be voting on a new enterprise fund for solid waste removal to free up an additional approximately $600,000 in operational budget for future years while filling that gap this year with the one-time use of free cash to provide level services on the municipal side of the budget. We entered into FY25 knowing it was the last year of this override, and were nonetheless able to accomplish pivotal goals that extend the impact of every dollar in Grafton to its maximum potential. For example, several departments, heads have shared realized wins and gains and efficiencies over FY25. The Planning Board and Town Planner were able to maintain their track record of roughly 35 approvals per year. Application approvals have increased 44% from 2020 and are inclusive of much more complex projects at a more efficient rate, for example UPS, 5 Millennium Drive, and 17 and 27 Upton Street. They've secured over $1.5 million in funding over the past year for various projects, namely capital improvement such as intersection upgrades, culvert repairs, and pedestrian access. They continue to improve and streamline regulations, averaging four articles per town meeting in accordance with state requirements and local needs. The town recently received the Community Planning Award from the Central Massachusetts Regional Planning Commission for our efforts in comprehensive planning and zoning reform. This year, they will strategically help develop, efforts, excuse me, this year they will strategically help development progress, particularly along our commercial corridors. They will continue to place a strong focus on securing grants to offset costs for the town while achieving necessary goals. Another highlight is our Call Fire Department. This past year, the department has been able to offer more hours and types of training, including working with the community and using a building slated for demolition at Tufts for hands-on demonstration. The fire department recruited campaign continues to be a success, hiring eight new personnel. Through state and federal grants and with support of town residents, the fire department has been able to keep our firefighters supplied with state-of-the-art safety gear and apparatus, which allows members to respond to emergencies with confidence that their gear and apparatus are safe and reliable. The town is also focused on creating a safe and welcoming environment for our seniors, the seniors center housing a myriad of programming and ensuring community involvement by holding an open house event to highlight the various programs, social supports, exercise classes, and financial assistance programs that are available. This event had more than 120 participants pass through. The council and aging was also able to work with accounting and assessors office to update the tax work-off program to a maximum benefit of $2,000, as well as increase the total number of participants eligible from 20 to 25. They'll continue their hard work in FY26, focusing on making Grafton a dementia-friendly community. Lastly, the Recreation Department worked diligently to make Grafton a bannered community for all. They recruited and hired a full-time certified therapeutic recreation specialist to design, implement, and expand on the inclusive and adaptive recreation programming in town. They continue to expand free family events, offering one every month. This year produced record attendance at the Craft Fair, well, 1,200 people attended. The department engaged in a Grafton facility strategic plan, which helped prioritize what can be done with the current town-owned properties and what alternatives can be done to improve those facilities. This year, they will continue to build on this momentum, offering more social and recreational opportunities and adaptive technology for the residents of Grafton and beyond. Significant challenges remain in the town's ability to maintain the services that result in these benefits to the residents. Namely, for this fiscal year's budget, the town was quoted an unexpected and meteoric increase in group health insurance costs at $6.8 million, or a 13% increase year over year. This is captured in the unclassified section of the budget. Given that the flat state aid and stagnant Chapter 70 revenue is not able to match the uncontrollable increases in these costs, along with the proposition two and a half constraints, the Town of Grafton has entered into an override-dependent cycle. Of note, the cuts below level services made to the school department include the removal of full-time human resources personnel, an unsustainable position for an employer of over 500 staff to find itself in. This is an example of an FY26 cut that must be reinstated during the next budget cycle. It will be imperative that if the town wishes to maintain the quality of services it enjoys today, the measures are taken to increase revenue, including but not limited to future overrides. For the last two years, we've been encouraging our senator and representative to advocate for changes to the state aid formulas so that towns such as Grafton get a fair share of that state aid and aren't regularly limited to the bare minimum per student aid increases. The state formula determines the amount of money that the town is required to put towards operations of the schools based on both property values and the income of our residents, but only allows us to collect revenue based on those property values. The formula determines that we don't need significant Chapter 78 increase because of our high resident incomes, despite the fact that we get no revenue from those incomes other than through state aid. This forces us to shift the growing tax burden from those who have larger incomes to those who have higher property values, even though those residents may be retired and thus not have significant incomes to pay those taxes. Unfortunately, we will see no windfall from these conversations in FY26. The FY26 budget overall represents a 4 million or 5.4% increase compared to FY25. The school department increased by 2.2 million or 4.9%. This is inclusive of the restoration of the 1.2 million one-time funds used for level service funding from FY25, and an additional $200,000 in fees being generated from the expansion of the medically fragile student program. This reflects an $800,000 increase in net expenses compared to last year. Our costs for Blackstone Valley Tech, or BVT, decreased by $66,000 or 4% due to a decrease in enrollment in 24, 25, 94 students compared to 23, 24, where we had 104, but still reflect an 8% increase in per student cost for Grafton from $16,109 to $17,553. Thus far, we are projecting a $150 per student increase in our Chapter 70 state aid for schools. The current overall state aid estimate for Grafton is $15 million, an increase of just over $280,000 from last year, or 1.87%, almost a full percentage less than the year prior and significantly below inflation and the increasing cost of health insurance. State aid as a percentage of overall FY26 revenue is down to 20.54% from over 26% just 10 years ago and flat from last fiscal year. The current balance of the Capital Stabilization Fund is- The current balance of the capital stabilization fund is $974,650.34. Our certified free cash is $4,965,846. The town utilized $550,000 in free cash for school roof repairs last fall and is voting this evening to utilize $552,500 to cover 15K in the Fire Department retirement account, $300,000 for the OPEB trust account, and $237.5K for snow and ice removal. Additionally, $600,000 will be transferred and appropriated for the FY '26 operational budget. Article 14 will transfer and appropriate $1,600,750 towards the capital plan, a total of $2,562,188, as presented for vote this evening. The town's combined free cash and stabilization reserves are within the threshold of 5% to 10% of the town's budget that is prescribed in our financial policies and are adequate to support a stable AA+ bond rating. Based on our performance, updated financial policies, and revision to our other post-employment benefits funding policies, we have a goal of establishing a AAA rating for the town. In FY '25, the average assessed value of a single-family home was $625,767, up from $596,235, and the tax rate was $13.94 per thousand, down 37 cents per thousand from FY '24, resulting in an average single-family tax bill of $8,723, up from $8,532. The Department of Revenue's most recent report, based on FY '22 data, lists Grafton with a combined resident income of $1.24 billion and a per capita income of $62,569. The Finance Committee would like to thank Town Administrator Evan Bressard, Assistant Town Administrator William Blake, Administrative Assistant Amber Monk, Town Finance Director Mary Loria, the Select Board, Superintendents of Schools Dr. James Cummings, School Department Director Finance Kathleen Lungarini, the School Committee, and all department heads for their hard work as part of the budget process this year. Respectfully submitted, your Finance Committee.
Thank you, Ms. Duckworth. I will now read each article individually. If you would like to hold an article, just yell "hold" and it will be set aside. Article 4. Article 5. Article 6. Article 7. Article 8. Article 9. Article 10. Article 11. Article 12. Article 13. Article 14. Is there any discussion on Consent Motion 2? Hearing none. All those in favor, press 1. This requires a simple majority. All those in favor, press 1. All those opposed, press 2. Voting is closed. I declare the motion carried 193 to 6. Article 15.
Madam Moderator?
Mr. Jefferson?
I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate a sum of money in the amount of $8,140,182, as recommended by the Town Administrator, the Finance Committee, and is outlined in Appendix A, printed in the May 2025 Annual Town Meeting amended packet, for the purpose of funding the operation of the several town departments in the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2025.
Motion made and seconded. Before I open this for discussion, I invite Town Administrator Evan Bressad to make a brief presentation.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Before I begin, I just want to thank the Finance Committee for the very thorough report. Most of the things in my presentation have already just been discussed, so we're going to kind of take this from a 35,000-foot overview. If you want to go to the first slide, Amber. So as the Finance Committee noted, we do have a AA+ stable rating, and we do everything we can to help protect that bond rating. We also have been really aggressively trying to get our hands around what's called OPEB. OPEB is Other Post-Employment Benefits, and so that's a liability that the town has to pay pensions and medical insurance for retirees. Our current liability is $65 million, of which we have funded $750,000, and that means we've funded about 1.15%. So we have been working with an actuary, and we do have an actual plan now to help close that gap in the coming fiscal years. Our stabilization and free cash remain healthy. Free cash especially, we've been closing free cash at a higher rate than Grafton normally does due to development as well as grants that the town is able to get. So we budget for line items and then get grants for those same line items and then don't spend those funds, obviously. So they wind up going into our free cash, so that remains about 11% of our operating budget. Our tax levy changes, you can see we went up about $1,300,000. That's about a 2.5% tax increase. Actually, it's exactly a 2.5% tax increase. And we have pegged our new growth at $923,000. On the next slide, you'll see that we continue to trend upwards as far as our new growth is concerned. Last year, in fiscal '25, we closed about $1.26 million. However, we don't budget to that number. We go to the, usually, the fiscal year before that or average of three fiscal years, whatever we think winds up making the most sense, which is how you come up with a free, I'm sorry, a new-growth number of $923,857, and then we use that as our benchmark moving forward. So in this particular fiscal year, we've been doing very well with grants. So in fiscal '24, we closed about $1.3 million in grants. The town was able to write. This year, to date, we're at $2.4 million. So that's really indicative of your dedicated municipal staff that are trying to find grants wherever they can, especially Fiona Coughlin, your Town Planner, who inundates us with work for every grant that she can get her hands on, which is a lot of money. Probably almost $2 million of that 2.4 is one staff member writing grants, which is amazing. The other thing I want to point out, you'll have a chance to discuss this if you so wish. When we get to Article 21, we are looking to set up an enterprise fund for your municipal solid waste. That helps us by moving $600,000 of what we use as tax revenue to offset the cost of municipal solid waste, and it would help make that program a self-sustaining program just for the people that use it. So currently, if you live in an apartment or most of the condo complexes, or any other system that is outside of our municipal solid waste, you're paying in your taxes for trash collection that you don't actually get to benefit from. And so what we decided to do in this budget is utilize about $600,000 in free cash to help balance the budget and then come up with a plan to revamp our trash program moving forward. And we have this upcoming fiscal year to get that accomplished. So your operating budget, you will see this in the amendment packet. It is virtually unchanged from the original warrant, but we did receive through the diligent work of Representative Meridian and Senator Moore. We're on track to get, as Representative Meridian said, about $150 per student, and so what we did was calculate that amount and add it to the School Department budget, which means there's a roughly $273,000 increase to that line item, which is fantastic. Otherwise, we haven't had any major changes since the budget was initially proposed. The other thing that the Finance Committee did discuss briefly, but I want to point out again, our general government line item you'll see went up by 10.7%. However, out of the roughly $1.5 million increase in that line, $1.3 million is health insurance and pensions. So it's not indicative of a major increase in municipal spending as far as staffing or programming or anything like that. Our health insurance for this year was an 18.25% increase, which is roughly $600,000 more than we anticipated, which is discussed on this slide. The penny, which is not something you do- could to head towards the School Department and as well as maintain the municipal services, we decided to go right up to that number. And Madam Moderator, if I may, can I talk about the capital plan that's in '16 before we go?
Yeah, we're going to vote on the capital plan immediately after this, so thank you.
Yep, that's what I thought. So our capital plan, as again the Finance Committee discussed, is $2,666,188. You'll see that there's a pretty good spread between all of the departments. We try to be as equitable as possible as we try to make sure that departments have the necessary equipment that they use on a daily basis, and then- out of capital stabilization and 1.7 million out of free cash to get to that total. Our fiscal financial management plan and keeps us on track to maintain our bond rating moving forward. And that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Bressad. Amy, will you now read the individual categories from the amended Appendix A?
Yes.
If anyone wishes to hold to discuss one of these categories, just yell "hold" and we'll set it aside, and then we'll vote on the remaining budget.
General Government, $15,732,147. Public Safety, $4,93252. Public Works, $3,763,298. Health and Human Services, $655,776. Culture and Recreation, $1,647,885. Debt Services, $5,931,210. Zero, or inter-fund transfers, zero. And total expenditures, $80,141,182.
Thank you. Any discussion on the motion? On which item?
Animal Control.
Which category is that?
I really don't know, sorry. I believe it's under Public Safety, Madam Chair.
Yep. Yep. So we're going to remove $98,063 from the total and vote on the budget?
Yeah.
Okay. Now I have to do math. Okay, I multiplied that by accident. $80,141,182 minus $98,063, I get $80,43, $80,43,119 as the total? That we're going to vote on? Okay, I just wanted someone to nod and say they checked my math.
I wasn't listening, but okay. You're good.
Thank you, William checked my math. Okay. We are voting for the budget of $80,43,119. Mr. Yeomans?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. I just have a question on the information technology, which is $461,697. I'd like to better understand what are the details of that almost half a million dollars? And the second question, is it possible in future presentations to have the previous year on these items as related to the present year? Thank you.
Do you wish to hold the line item 461,697 from the total before we vote? The remaining budget amount would be $79,581,422. Any other holds on the budget? Can I have a motion on the amended total?
Do we have to go through the whole motion again or just the amended amount?
I would go through the entire motion here.
All righty. Madam Moderator, I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate a sum of money in the amount of $79,581,422, as recommended by the Town Administrator and the Finance Committee and is outlined in Appendix A, printed in the May 2025 Annual Town Meeting amended Amendment Packet for the purpose of funding the operation of several town departments in the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2025.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. Wait, did I hear something? Nope. They're just whispering. All those in favor, press 1. All those opposed, press 2. Voting is closed. I declare the motion has carried 203 to 8 on the amended amount of $79,581,422. I'll now take a motion on the holded amount for Animal Control, under the category of Public Safety, for $98,063.
Good evening. William Hanley, Brigham Hill Road, Grafton.
A little bit closer.
Madam Moderator, through you, I'd like to ask, I guess, the Town Administrator, I'm not sure, but why such a difference from last year, 32 to 8, to $98,000 this year? In 2010, let's back up. In 2016, the budget for this particular item was $7275, $7275. Personnel was 7,000, expenses was 200. So how did we get to $98,000?
Sure. So prior to my arrival, and I don't know the exact date that this occurred, but the town entered into a contract with the Town of Westboro to regionalize.
Yeah.
Since I've gotten here and in this last fiscal year, we did add personnel to that department as well as replace some of the equipment that they were using, so that's our portion of that. That includes a full-time employee, a part-time employee, all their benefits, and our share of what they have for equipment.
So last year, it was 32?
Yep.
So how come it went to- So how come it, how come it went to ninety-eight? I don't understand.
Yep, so that was the contract that we were able to renew with them. And so we, we just, the, the, excuse me, sorry. The share was redistributed of what the entire cost was based on call volume, as well as, like I said, we did add additional staff so that there was support for vacations and overnights and all the rest of it.
So are we still in with Westboro and Shrewsbury?
Correct, Westboro.
So West, oh, Westboro only?
Yes.
Okay, so they're paying ninety-eight thousand also?
No, they have a larger share of that amount.
Okay. I, I just, I just find this unbelievable, how much it's gone up. And I, I hope everybody here hears that also. I mean, I, I don't, I don't understand it.
Okay. I'm, I'm happy to speak to you offline too.
This is where, this is where, this is where I'm at. I just, and I hope there are other people in here that feel the same way I do.
Okay.
That's all I have. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the motion? Oh. Yes.
Sorry, it's my first one of these. I'm Alexander Killen. I live on Oak Street. How many calls did we have last year in the town of Grafton? Do we know?
I honestly don't have that data in front of me right now. I'm trying to get my system to come up in here, but I'm having a little bit of trouble. Chief, do you have any idea top of mind how many calls for animal control?
Yes, sir.
Let me, let me see if I can get that data for you, sir.
I can't imagine you prepped for it, but I appreciate it.
Yeah.
Were there any other questions on animal control line item? The total amount is ninety-eight thousand, sixty-three dollars. Fun fact, moderator can't ask for a motion.
Yeah, I, I actually don't have our call volume on that. In my system, I'd have to go through the police department system and get them to pull a report on that. So I apologize, but I don't know that number top of mind.
Madam Moderator?
Mr. Jefferson?
I move the town vote to pass the animal control budget at ninety-eight thousand, sixty-three dollars as presented.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor, press one. All those opposed, press two. Voting is closed. I declare the motion has carried 148 to 57. Information Technology: $461,697. Before I open this for any discussion, can I have a motion unofficially?
Madam Moderator? I move the town to pass the information technology budget at $461,697 as presented.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? Mr. Yeomans?
I apologize for repeating myself, but I'd like to know the level of detail, the large portion of that half a million dollars. And the second question I have is, is it possible at future meetings to have a comparison with the previous year? I know I can look it up online and edit, but would it be helpful to see the change? Thank you.
Yes, we'll include in future town meetings. There's in prior fiscal year as part of our omnibus, we can do that without, without an issue. Probably should have done that coming into this, but I'll blame the lady for that. Really disappointed. So the information technology budget is, is a pretty large budget. I do want to point out that in years past, this budget was spread throughout the municipal budget in different line items in different departments and brought that under one umbrella to make it a little bit more transparent and also to make it a little bit easier to track and see where we're trending as far as IT goes. In that budget, you have all of your GIS system that we use, your geographic information system, the town website, all of our email as well as all of your office or Microsoft based softwares. Our maintenance contract, that is, we have a staff that comes in days a week to do kind of the lower level type of staff. We have Vadar, that is our entire financial management software that runs the entire account for Grafton. We have our budget software. We have what's called our special technical line, and that is the contract that we use for consulting services, but also offsite data storage, our offsite backup, our cybersecurity, and a myriad of other smaller things that kind of fall into that same vein, as well as budget, fifteen thousand dollars in new equipment down that line. And so that's replacing usually at point, we run about four or more machines a year that we turn over, just to make things modern.
Thank you. Are there any other questions regarding information technology line item? Here, here on, all those in favor, press one. All those opposed, press two. Voting is closed. I declare the motion has carried 1993 to 14. Article 16.
Madam Moderator?
Mr. Alamo?
I move the town vote to appropriate transfer funds in the amount of $1,745,000 from free cash and appropriate transfer $961,438 from the capital stabilization fund for a total appropriation of $2,666,188 for the funding of capital projects and purchases during the fiscal year, fiscal period from July 1, 2025 to June 30, 2026, as outlined in Appendix A, printed in the 2025 annual town meeting.
Motion made and seconded. Is there any discussion on the motion?
Good evening. William Hanley, Brigham Hill Road, Grafton. Item number 19, public schools stadium lights LED. I'm not sure who to talk, is gonna talk on this, but my question is, are we replacing the four pole lights that we have at the main field? Are we adding lights on other fields?
Sorry, so the $160,000 for public school stadium lights?
Yep.
Okay.
Do we have a contract? Do we have a contract already, or is this an RFP, or is this a guest, the 160,000? I'm not sure.
Mr. Cummings, can you come forward, please?
Jay Cummings, One Georgia Road Superintendent of Schools. It was RFP. It was also tied to an energy grant, so these are 12, 13-year-old stadium lights, so not new, new light bulbs, but not new light stands or, or anything like that. Correct, other than the actual bulbs themselves, nothing new.
The bulbs, I know the bulbs are out. A lot of them are out, so we're replacing all the bulbs.
Re- replacing bulbs in the, basically casing around each of the bulbs.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other discussion on Article 16? Hearing none. All those in favor, press one. All those opposed, press two. Voting is closed. I declare the motion carried 201 to 7. Article 17.
Madam Moderator?
Mr. Daphne?
I move the town vote to appropriate funds in the amount of $3,803,328 from Sewer Enterprise receipts for the operation of the Grafton Sewer Department Enterprise Fund during the fiscal period from July 1, 2025 to June 30, 2026, as outlined in Appendix C of the May 2025 annual town meeting warrant.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor, press one. All those opposed, press two. Voting is closed. I declare the motion carried 201 to 7. Article 18.
Madam Moderator?
Mr. Ofton?
I moved that the town vote to appropriate funds in the amount of $404,500 from the PEG Access and Cable Related Fund to fund the Grafton Community Television Budget for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2025, as recommended by the Cable Oversight Committee.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor, press one. All those opposed, press two. Voting is closed. I declare the motion carries 191 to 16. Article 19.
Madam Moderator?
Ms. Foley?
I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate funds in the amount of $1,655,606 to pay the town's apportioned share of the net operating cost and capital assessment of the Blackstone Valley Regional School District.
Motion made and seconded. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor, press one. All those opposed, press two. Voting is closed. I declare the motion has carried 196 to 17. Article 20.
Madam Moderator?
Mr. Jefferson?
I move that the town vote to authorize the creation of a stabilization account for Blackstone Valley Regional Vocational School District in accordance with the provisions of Mass. General Law, Chapter 71, Section 16, G and a half.
Motion made and seconded. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor, press one. All those opposed, press two. Voting is closed. I declare the motion carries 196 to 13. Article 21.
Madam Moderator?
Mr. Alamo?
I move that the town vote to accept the provisions of Massachusetts General Law's Chapter 44, Section 53, F and a half, establishing waste management as an enterprise fund effective fiscal year 2027.
Motion made and seconded. Is there any discussion on the motion?
Madam Moderator, I have a question about what the funding proposal is for sanitation going forward. Right now, we have, we have pay-as-you-throw, and I'm assuming if we're moving 600,000 from free cash, that if the budget's $1,349 for sanitation, that the pay-as-you-throw generates maybe seven, 750 or 650, whatever that is. And can you tell us what the plan is as far as once there's an enterprise fund to have it self-sustaining? Is it going to continue to be pay-as-you-throw with the fees being higher, or will there be a separate fee also charged? Is there a proposal right now?
Mr. Bressad?
Yes, so that's an excellent question. The short answer is we don't have a full plan currently. We need to establish the fund in order to go down this road for a few different options. But at the select board meeting, we did discuss creating a group that will review our current trash program, municipal solid waste program. Pay-as-you-throw is a great program. It's the most environmentally friendly program that exists really in, in our area. But we haven't done a good job of keeping pace with rising costs. And so the select board discussed looking at a number of different options. One is keeping it just strict as pay-as-you-throw and, and raising fees, which is, you know, nobody likes higher bag fees. I don't know if you've ever heard that or not. And then the other thing we can look at is looking at a automated system, which is every household gets a barrel. That barrel is a certain size, maybe it's 64 gallons is pretty common. And then anything that the household produces over that is a pay-as-you-throw bag called an overflow bag. Those are kind of the two biggest models that we see. But the select board did pledge to create the group and go down this road over the next fiscal year before making a decision on how to actually move the municipal solid waste program forward.
Is there any other discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor, press one. All those opposed, press two. Voting is closed. I declare the motion has carried 183 to 27. Article 22.
Madam Moderator?
Mr. Daphne?
I move the town vote to transfer and appropriate a sum of money in the amount of $1 million from the fund reserved for bediments to the minor sewer extension account.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor, press one. All those opposed, press two. Voting is closed. I declare the motion has carried 200 to 9. Article 23.
Madam Moderator.
Mr. Ofton.
I move that the town vote to transfer and appropriate a sum of money in the amount of $200,000 from the Sewer Retained Earnings Account to the Major Equipment Account.
Motion made and seconded. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor, press one. All those opposed, press two. Voting is closed. I declare the motion has carried 195 to 9. Article 24.
Madam Moderator.
Ms. Foley.
I move that the town vote to accept the provisions of Massachusetts General Law's Chapter 32, Section 4 to B and 1/2.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion on the motion?
Through you, Madam Moderator, perhaps the town administrator could clarify whether the added credits are an OPEB liability or is that funded by state retirement boards? When you give people credits for the part-time service when they're going full-time?
Yeah, so it would be considered part of our OPEB liability, but in looking at it with the actuary, it is so miniscule that it really doesn't... You know, out of $65 million, it's $65,1500.
Okay. I didn't know it was that little money. And just one matter of clarification on the... I don't know if this is the FinCom recommendation. Under the explanation, it says, "And give them credit for the prior service in the event they become full-time members of a fire department." It was my understanding from the reading of the statute that going from part-time to full-time, that wasn't conditioned, that even if someone never went full-time to a full-time department, that they would still receive those credits. So was that part of the actuarial calculation?
So they will receive that... They'll be eligible for those credits regardless of whether they go on to be a full-time firefighter or a full-time, you know, poll employee in some way. But they have to be vested in the retirement system.
So it's still pennies, pennies on the dollar?
It really doesn't amount to a heck of a lot. And you don't pay any of that upfront cost. That's all on the employee to do that. So we're not out-of-pocketing this at all. I think it's a great recruitment tool for call firefighters so that if you do go on and become a full-timer somewhere else, you can buy into the system. And it does help some of the folks that have moved on from a town like Grafton and gone to a full-time department elsewhere.
Okay, thank you.
Absolutely.
Any other discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor, press one. All those opposed, press two. Voting is closed. I declare the motion carried 196 to 13. Article 25.
Madam Moderator.
Mr. Jefferson.
I move that the town vote to appropriate $1,400,000 to finance the purchase of a new fire truck for the Grafton Fire Department, with said appropriation to be met by borrowing.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion on this motion? Hearing none. This article requires a 2/3 majority vote. All those in favor, press one. All those opposed, press two. Voting is closed. I declared the motion has carried by the required 2/3 majority, 177 to 29. Article 26.
Madam Moderator.
Mr. Alamo.
I move that the town vote to authorize and empower the Select Board to submit a home rule petition to the General Court to authorize the town to adopt a bylaw which will restrict the use of second-generation anticoagulant rodenticides on privately-owned properties.
Motion made and seconded. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor, press one. All those opposed, press two. Voting is closed. I declare the motion has carried 182 to 20. Article 27.
Madam Moderator.
Mr. Dauphine.
I move the town vote to indefinitely postpone Article 27.
Motion made and seconded. Is there any discussion on the motion?
Madam Moderator.
Ms. Duckworth.
The Finance Committee has voted to amend its recommendation for Article 27 to pass indefinitely.
Thank you.
Postpone indefinitely.
Any discussion on the motion to pass over indefinitely? Hearing none. All those in favor, press one. All those opposed, press two. Voting is closed. I declare the motion has carried 163 to 23. Article 28.
Madam Moderator.
Mr. Ofton.
I move that the town vote to indefinitely postpone Article 28.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion on the motion?
Madam Moderator.
Ms. Duckworth.
The Finance Committee has voted to amend its recommendation of Article 28 to indefinitely postpone.
Any other discussion on the motion? All those in favor, press one. All those opposed, press two. Voting is closed. I declare the motion has carried 168 to 19. Article 29.
Madam Moderator.
Ms. Foley.
I move that the town vote to amend Section 1.3.3.3 and 1.3.3.4 under site plan review of Section 1 of the Grafton Zoning Bylaw as printed in Article 29 of the May 2025 Annual Meeting Warrant, and further to authorize non-substantive changes to the lettering, numbering, and pagination of the zoning bylaw to be consistent with said bylaw.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. This requires a 2/3 majority vote. All those in favor, press one. All those opposed, press two. Voting is closed. I declare the motion has carried by the required 2/3 majority, 185 to 10. Article 30.
Madam Moderator.
Mr. Jefferson.
I move that the town vote to amend Section 1.3.3 entitled Site Plan Review and Section 1.5.8 entitled Period of Validity of Section 1 of the Grafton Zoning Bylaw as printed in Article 30 of the May 2025 Annual Town Meeting Warrant, and further to authorize non-substantive changes to the lettering, numbering, and pagination of the zoning bylaw to be consistent with said bylaw.
Motion made and seconded. Before I open this for discussion, I believe the Planning Board's going to make a brief statement. Or Fiona can.
Hi, Madam Moderator. I'm Fiona Coughlin, Director of Planning and Community Development for the Town of Grafton. This was outlined in the Planning Board report, but just reiterating that we are all... Special permit applications in the Town of Grafton require a site plan to be submitted as well. So the purpose of this amendment is to align the periods of validity so that they are the same and also that the deadline is to commence construction. Site plan review originally had that construction needed to be completed within two years, but we're changing that to construction needs to commence within one year so that both of these sections talk. Thank you.
Thank you, Fiona. Are there... Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. This does require a 2/3 majority. All those in favor, press one. All those opposed, press two. Voting is closed. I declare the motion has carried by the required 2/3 majority, 193 to 10. Article 31.
Madam Moderator.
Mr. Alamo.
I move that the town vote to amend Section 12 entitled Village and Neighborhood Mixed Use District of the Grafton Zoning Bylaw as printed in Article 31 of the May 2025 Annual Meeting Warrant, and further to authorize non-substantive changes to the lettering, numbering, and pagination of the zoning bylaw to be consistent with said bylaw.
Motion made and seconded. Before we bring this for discussion, Fiona's going to make a brief statement with slides.
Hello again. Fiona Coughlin, Director of Planning and Community Development for the Town of Grafton. So this... The purpose of these changes is solely to clarify what townhouses/row houses, how they are defined in the bylaw. So we have been seeing a lot of interest in development in the village mixed-use districts in town. A lot of applicants, potential applicants, are seeking to build two-family/duplex development styles and coining them as townhouses. But that really wasn't the intent of the bylaw when this was adopted a few years ago. So we just are clarifying here solely what the definition of a townhouse/row house is. Three dwelling units connected in a horizontal layout, separated by a common wall. So one building with three-plus units within the structure, separated by a common wall as opposed to, you know, two families. We have seen applicants in the past that are trying to develop, again, duplexes and trying to coin them as townhouses. And we just want to make sure that it's very clear going forward the difference between duplexes and townhouses and the intention of the zoning here. This is not a change that will affect in any way where duplexes or townhouses are allowed in the Town of Grafton. It's solely a clarification of how those types of structures and development styles are defined. Thank you.
Okay. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. This does require...
Madam Moderator. Mr. Yeoman's has his hand up.
Mr. Yeoman, I'm sorry, I didn't see you.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Bill Yeoman's, 297 Providence Road. My question relative to this is related to the 1.2-acre lot at 277 Providence Road. And I have a question. Does Article 31 have any connection to the redevelopment of the vacant lot that was there? How that came about is 277 Providence Road was... Is a 1.2-acre lot. It formerly had an old colonial and a barn which was torn down. Now it's a vacant lot awaiting redevelopment, such as the lot across the street at 274 Providence Road, which was a 0.84-acre lot. That small cape was torn down and replaced by eight forepurchased condos built and sold in 2023 and '24. So that contributed to our housing need. The 1.2-acre lot that's left, and it's like a gaping hole in a first grader's mouth when they lost their front teeth. You know, that's a big parcel of land that awaits redevelopment. And I looked at the town records, and it goes back, and it's been moved and sold a few times. The first owner was Ellen Baker, perhaps in July 2004. That sale price was a dollar, probably just a deed transfer. Then Wells Fargo Bank, they had a sales price on it for $387,500 in July of 2016. It appears that that was a foreclosure. Then it was torn down. Alpha Omega Engineering Trust in Sutton had a sale price on it for $100 in June, in July of 2018. The most recent sale of that property was in December of 2024. It sold to Elevate Enterprises in Clinton, on Berlin Road in Clinton. And the sale price at that transfer was $800,000. So I look at this, and I just wonder... I don't mind housing. I think we need housing. What I would not want to see, and it's only by special permit with the Planning Board that it would go there. The Polish Home was torn down, and we have all phased glass. They put up a beautiful building. No question about that. And I don't argue with the special permit putting that office light industrial building up. I would not want to see something like that be on Providence Road. It's four houses down from our present living. And I just look at the sale price of $800,000. Something's going to happen on that lot, and I hope it's housing rather than anything else that might go in there. And I just raise the question, does Article 31 have any connection to that vacant lot? Thank you.
Fiona, does the article cover that area?
Yes, this is one of the properties that prompted this revision. That's correct. Yes. Yes.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion on the motion? Hearing none. This does require a two-thirds majority vote. All those in favor, press one. All those opposed, press two. Voting is closed. I declare the motion has carried by the required two-thirds majority, one hundred seventy-one to thirty. Article thirty-two. Motion made and seconded. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor, press one. All those opposed, press two. Voting is closed. I declare the motion has passed, one hundred seventy-eight to fourteen. Article thirty-three.
Madam Moderator.
Mr. Ofton.
I move that the town vote to amend section two entitled Definitions of the Grafton Zoning Bylaw as printed in Article thirty-three of the May twenty twenty-five Annual Town Meeting Amendment Packet and further to authorize non-substantive changes to the lettering, numbering, and pagination of the zoning bylaw to be consistent with said bylaw.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Is there any discussion on the motion?
Madam Moderator.
I didn't see who was that.
I'm, I'm-
Oh, yes.
Hello.
Sorry, Victoria.
The Finance Committee has voted to update its recommendation in light of the amendment. And the Finance Committee now recommends that Article thirty-three is approved as amended.
Thank you. So, this has been supported by FinCom. Is there any other discussion on the motion? Hearing none. This does require a two-thirds majority vote. All those in favor, press one. All those opposed, press two. Voting is closed. I declare the motion has carried by the required two-thirds majority, one fifty-nine to thirty-four. Article thirty-four.
Madam Moderator.
Ms. Foley.
I move that the town vote to amend section five-point-eight entitled Wireless Communications Facilities of the Grafton Zoning Bylaw as printed in Article thirty-four of the May twenty-twenty-five Annual Meeting Warrant and further to authorize non-substantive changes to the lettering, numbering, and pagination of the zoning bylaw to be consistent with said bylaw.
Motion made and seconded. Is there any discussion on the motion? Fiona would like to update everyone on exactly what this does.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. So, many folks may or may not realize that we have a wireless bylaw here in town that dictates how what we call wireless communication facilities are permitted. These can range from existing poles to co-locations, adding carriers to completely new structures. However, the focus of these amendments are to essentially bring our wireless bylaw into twenty twenty-five. Our bylaw has not been updated since it was adopted in the nineties. I think Bob, our Vice Chair, was there when that was adopted. So, we did do a significant review of the bylaw with the help of Isotrop Wireless, a wireless consultant that does work all across the Commonwealth to make sure that the edits that we proposed here are in line with the most technological updates for the state and at the federal level. A lot of this is essentially updating the language, adding definitions that did not previously exist for commonly-used terms, and streamlining permitting processes depending on the type of wireless application that's being proposed, most notably smaller-scale applications that we call eligible facilities requests. So, way back when, these types of things would require a full special permit review. Now, they do not. It's federally mandated that it's treated more as a minor change. So, our bylaw's been updated to reflect that or is potentially updated to reflect that. We've also reviewed our submittal requirements to make sure that we are ensuring structural integrity of any proposals as well as being cognizant of emissions. We know that that we've, the board has heard time and time again that that is a concern of the public. So, we're bolstering our submittal requirements. And lastly, we have a new section that's titled Modifications, which essentially just outlines what the building inspector is in charge of versus what needs to come before the board and how those are evaluated. Oh, as, as well as, I apologize. There is antenna sizes. We're typically eliminate, limited to five feet. That is an outdated requirement. Antennas are now up to eight feet and can prove to be structurally sound with the submission, of course, of a, of a report that says that, which is in here. So, we are removing the size limit for antennas. And some unmanned equipment, that's the, all the stuff on the ground, typically it was limited to twelve feet high. We raised that by one foot because most applications and most unmanned equipment for these types of applications are, have, have associated equipment that's thirteen feet high. So, not to bore you all to tears, but that's kind of a summary of where we are. And, you know, this had gone through a lot of public commentary and a lot of review on behalf of the Planning Board before bringing it to town meeting. I'm happy to answer any questions. I know this is technical. So, thank you.
Thank you, Fiona. Does anyone have any questions on the motion? Yes, sir.
Michael Fazina from Adams Road, Grafton. I've been a project manager in telecom construction for about thirteen years, and I was just wondering, thirteen feet for ground-mounted equipment, that doesn't seem like it's going to accommodate for the new wave of small cells that are going to be installed. I know Grafton's probably low on the list, but I wouldn't be shocked if we were installing them in ten years. Is that something that was taken into account?
I see Fiona nodding her head, so I think it was considered. But Fiona, could you answer that, please?
Yeah, thank you for the question. That's a great question because we did look at small cell bylaws as well. We have not, we have not included that in this ask. We're kind of waiting to evaluate that at a future date. But I do understand and appreciate the fact that that technology is rapidly changing, that we will need to, to do that eventually. And that will ultimately be, it will probably be a zoning amendment, but it will also likely be a general bylaw amendment because that will be at the discretion of the SLAC Board when we get to that point. So, thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion on the motion? Hearing none. This article requires a two-thirds majority vote. All those in favor, press one. All those opposed, press two. Voting is closed. I declare the motion has carried by the required two-thirds majority, one eighty-two to eleven. Article thirty-five.
Madam Moderator.
Mr. Jefferson.
I move that the town vote to appropriate two-hundred-ninety-two-thousand-five-hundred dollars from the FY twenty-six Community Preservation Budgeted Reserve Account for the purpose of replacing the Ferry Street Playground with such funds to be extended by June thirtieth, twenty twenty-seven, unless the CPZ by majority vote extends the deadline.
Motion made and seconded. Before I open this to discussion, John Stevens of the Community Preservation Committee will be making a brief statement.
Good evening. Just a few comments about community preservation. The Act was adopted master general law. Chapter forty-four B was adopted in Grafton in two thousand and one. Grafton taxpayers have a one-point-five-percent surcharge. The maximum was three percent. We chose a halfway point to, to ensure that it would succeed at town meeting, which it did. The first one-hundred-thousand dollars in real estate value is excluded. The reason I'm speaking is because there were questions about why can't we use CPA funds for the budget this year when we're having a tight budget. And it's because the Act only allows three funding areas. They are open space of recreation, historic preservation, and affordable, affordable housing. Each of those funds, which in the last year, our budget is seven-hundred-and-eleven-thousand-dollar surcharge, state match of one-hundred-and-ten-thousand. We have interest on funds of twenty thousand for a total of eight-hundred-and-forty-two-thousand. Ten percent of that, which is eighty-four thousand for each of the three funding areas are required. The remaining seventy percent can be spent in any percentage of the, of those funding expenses. This coming year, we have seven-hundred-and-eighteen-thousand dollars that'll be available for fiscal year twenty twenty-six. But we can't spend that to operate the town. It can only be for affordable housing, open space recreation, and historic preservation. So, I think it, it, a lot of people aren't aware that there are restrictions and we, we can't do maintenance. We can't do certain things once, for those projects. And if you have questions, please come to our meetings. We're happy, I'll happy to talk to you after the meeting tonight as well. That's all I have.
Thank you, John. Is there any discussion on the motion regarding Ferry Street Playground?
Roger Trahan for Old Upton Road. Just as a matter of clarification with all the meeting materials, that Accessibility Advisory Commission did vote unanimously to support this project and for its accessibility features. So, please vote yes.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor, press one. All those opposed, press two. Voting is closed. I declare the motion has carried, one ninety to seven. Article thirty-six.
Madam Moderator.
Mr. Alamo.
I move that the board vote to appropriate seventy-thousand dollars from the fiscal year twenty twenty-six Community Preservation Budgeted Reserve for the exterior restoration and preservation of the Congressional Church of Grafton with such funds to be expended by June thirtieth, twenty twenty-seven, unless the CPC by majority vote extends the deadline.
Motion made and seconded. Before I open this to discussion, I believe the Congregational Church will be making a brief sta-, oh, there you are. You made it up. Andy and Rob, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Rob Lane, thirty-five North Street, Grafton, and the moderator for the Grafton Congregational Church. We just wanted to give a quick little overview. Last year, we did receive a grant from town meeting through CPA funds to do the restoration of the outside of the church. And we are coming back this year to ask for an additional sum, and we'll explain that to everyone. For those who weren't here at town meeting last year, just a quick little overview of who we are, if you could advance. So, we've been in town for almost three hundred years. The facility itself is approaching two hundred years old on the Common. We, you know, we're welcoming and affirming congregation. We, we support many scout organizations in town. We, we make our facility available to a number of town organizations and groups, including those scouts, but also multiple twelve-step groups, Al-Anon, and others. And we do a lot of work in the community through the organizations that are represented up there. And it's a long list beyond that that we do support. Next slide.
Good evening, everybody. Andy DeShane, thirteen Meadowbrook Road. I'll keep this brief since we're getting on here. As Rob said, we applied for and received funds last year that were based on estimates and experience from our painter and our restoration carpenter. They got a little, the closer we got to starting, the carpenter was more nervous about what he couldn't see, which was up high. So, the steeple and everything else sort of above the main part of the building. So, we spent five thousand dollars to get a lift and spend some time up there with the carpenter so they could get a better look. And lo and behold, they came back with a firmer number, but was, of course, more money than we had raised or asked for. So, rather than start a project that we couldn't finish, we put it on hold until we can come back here tonight and try and get the remaining funds that we are gonna need to finish the project.
It's just a quick look at the exterior of the church in need of paint. You can go through the next slide. There's also the need to reset all of the stonework at the front, not the steps themselves, but the, the walkway, which is a tripping hazard currently. And then if you could go to the next slide. This is just a quick reminder of what we had for a budget in the top left-hand corner of a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, and that's what we presented last year at town meeting. There's an additional eighty-nine thousand dollars of, of preservation work that we believe is necessary in order to do this project. You will note that there's a large contingency amount here. We don't want to have to come back to town meeting again to, to ask for more funds. We don't want to have to go back to our organization to ask for more pledges and contributions. And it's our full intention to be able to take the, the full contingency and return it back to the CPA funds unspent, but that is there as a contingency. We did receive an award last year of a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. We have basically met our initial capital campaign request of fifty thousand dollars. That's been received. And we have another campaign we're running within the church for twenty-five thousand, which we've already received pledges over fifteen thousand. And we have site, line of sight to the remaining ten there. And the additional request here tonight is for seventy.
Thank you. Is there any discussion on the motion?
Scott Rossiter, two Stonewall Drive. Seventy thousand dollars is not a lot of money. I love the Community Preservation Act, so it pains me to come up here and talk to you guys a little bit about this. But what concerns me is that these churches that do a lot of good work in our community, I get it. And by the way, they don't play, they don't pay real estate taxes like you and I do. And in return for that, we expect them to do good in our community, right? Well, now, they've kind of found an easy way to tap more taxpayer money to fix their private buildings. Every dollar of your money that you spend to fix these privately-owned buildings is a dollar less that you have for other projects in town. We need to think seriously about how much money. It's been hundreds of thousands of dollars in the last few years for the three- It's been hundreds of thousands of dollars in the last few years for the three churches on the Common. So think about that before you vote in favor of this motion. Thank you.
Mr. Stevens, and then Mr. Yeoman.
The three buildings that we funded are the Baptist Church, the Congregational Church, and the Unitarian Church, each for different purposes. These are three historic buildings that create the fabric of the Common. If we didn't have one, two, or three of those buildings, for whatever reason, it would change the entire look of the Common. It's... They're very important to the look and the feel and the way everybody loves Grafton, the quintessential Common that we have. This is an investment, just like we invested in the townhouse, even though that's a town building. All these play together to create the look, the feel, the history, and preserving the history of Grafton. It's important, and I think that's why we have CPA, to fund these type of projects.
Mr. Yeomans.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. In looking at this article, I recall in 2010, when my wife and I moved here to Grafton Center, I started getting involved and I started asking questions of the CPA Act, which we didn't have at that time in Shrewsbury. And I came up with the idea that, gee, that CPA money, I think that the churches in the Common should get $50,000 a year from that CPA money because those churches are so important to the community and the value of the Grafton Common. And they said you couldn't do that. And I said, why not? I'm very pleased to see that in the past few years and with this article, that the churches bounding the Common, which are so important to the beautiful Common of this town, are getting funds to preserve these ancient structures that don't preserve themselves. And I suggest that we all vote for this and vote for it tonight. And Scott and I have different points of view on this, but I think that these churches on the Town Common are gems and should be supported as such and polished up as the Town Common itself has been polished. So I would strongly urge that we all vote for this tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Yeomans. Is there any other discussion on the motion?
Yes, this is Jackie Fazino from 124 Adams Road in North Grafton. I understand both these churches from a historical and community aspect as they're on the Common, but have we ever provided any funding to non-Christian religious buildings?
I'm sorry, there was a noise. I didn't hear.
Have we ever provided any funding to non-Christian religious buildings?
Has CPC ever...
Yes.
Has Town Meeting ever authorized CPC to fund a non-Christian religious building?
Yes.
I defer to someone from CPC.
We have not had an application from a non-Christian religious organization to date.
Christine Breacher, 23 Brew Street. Unitarian Church is not a Christian religious establishment, and they have received CPC funding.
Thank you for that clarification. Is there any other discussion on this motion? Hearing none. All those in favor...
I think you got a hand up in the back corner.
I'm sorry. Could I get one of our microphone runners to bring a mic over here, please?
Arthur Davison, 36 Hingham Road, North Grafton. I'm a member of the Unitarian Universalist Church in Grafton Center, and we also are the home of a synagogue who's based out of Westboro. So we have two non-Christian religions getting serviced from CPC.
Thank you. Any other discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor, press 1. All those opposed, press 2. Voting is closed. I declare the motion has carried, 149 to 45. Article 37.
Madam Moderator.
Mr. Dauphinay.
I move the town vote to transfer the sum of money in the amount of $84,220 from the Community Preservation Affordable Housing Reserve Account to the Grafton Affordable Housing Trust, with such funds to be used in accordance with the Community Preservation Act guidelines for community housing.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion on the motion?
Roger Trahan for Old Upton Road. Not sure if this is through you, Madam Moderator, or a question to Community Preservation Committee, Affordable Housing Trust, or Town Council. It has to do with, starting backwards, the Finance Committee recommendation mentioned that this is necessary to satisfy the CPA requirement to reserve 10% in each of the categories. I thought that that was achieved and that it was in the CPA Housing Reserve Account for that purpose. Now, these warrant articles, pardon, these main motions, a few years ago, they no longer have the wording in the last sentence without further appropriation from Town Meeting. It's understood that once it leaves the CPA Housing Reserve Account and goes to the Housing Trust, the Housing Trust does not have to come back to Town Meeting for permission as to how to spend that. So the question is, although the Affordable Housing Trust would like to have that money and not have to come back to Town Meeting, must that money go to the Affordable Housing Trust, or could it stay within the existing account so long as it was spent for affordable housing purposes?
So if I'm understanding your question correctly...
Must a transfer exist?
Does this have to happen, or could it stay in CPC until such time that the Affordable Housing Trust had a specific project they wanted to invest in?
Exactly.
I... Mr. Stevens, you're right here. Please answer.
It could, but that means the Affordable Housing Trust, if they needed the money tomorrow, would have to wait for a special Town Meeting or until the next Town Meeting. So what we did proactively 10 years ago, we automatically just transferred to them. It still has the CPA restrictions. It still has to be funded and accounted in the same way, but their money is available to them now.
And through you, Madam Moderator, I guess the question is, is that if these outflows were happening on a regular basis from Affordable Housing Trust, I think I'd buy that argument. But I guess that begs the question, what is the AHT Affordable Housing Trust balance right now? Is it over $1 million? Is it less, more?
Somebody from the Trust would have to answer that, because I know they've spent for Upton Street, so I don't know the exact balance.
And my point being is that we have control over the other CPA monies. And I kind of was like saying to myself, there's a lot of money that's been transferred in this way over many Town Meetings to the tune of hundreds of thousands of dollars. I actually prefer the Affordable Housing Trust to come back to Town Meeting and ask Town Meeting for the monies. And I think as far as an efficiency standpoint, that would be arguing against Town Meeting itself as being inefficient. If the Affordable Housing Trust had been having all these regular outflows, yeah, I think I'd be leaning more toward your argument. But I actually want a say in how this money's spent. And so I'm gonna vote no on this, and invite others to do so. But until clarification that it can happen. So are you saying that it can stay in the account?
It's a two-step process. The first step, we have to put it in the fund to then transfer it. So that's why you see it twice.
Right.
It's the same dollars, but just two different...
So the 10% has been allocated. In other words, the Finance Committee's recommendation suggests that it hasn't been allocated, but it has.
It's there for us to spend. So if we had a warrant article for this, we could spend it in October.
So the answer to the question is, it could stay... Legally, it can stay in this current account, correct?
Correct.
All right. So I'm gonna vote no, maybe attempt to set a precedent. I really like the idea of having Affordable Housing Trust come back to Town Meeting to spend our very tax dollars rather than rubber-stamping this year after year. Thank you.
Thank you.
Michael Fazino, Adams Road. Been in construction for a long time, and not having the money immediately available to spend like you would in a scenario like this causes you to lose opportunities and miss out on things. You get outbid because you don't have the money, and you have to wait until October to get it. I think we might end up losing more money than we spend if we don't give them the flexibility they want here.
Thank you.
And one follow-up question to that is that if the money were outflowing on a regular basis, I'd buy that argument. If someone can answer me the question in the affirmative that they are actually needing the monies as the gentleman suggests, then I would vote yes on this. And until someone comes up and says otherwise, I'm voting no and asking other people to do the same.
Mr. Prisby.
Edward Prisby, 25 Danielle Drive. Madam Moderator, you didn't even look over at me. You saw it. I could have been going to the bathroom. I mean, come on. Who knows? Okay, so where to begin? There is a reason why the Affordable Housing Trust exists independently of Town Meeting. Everybody in here, I bet you is a homeowner. Raise your hands in here if you're a renter. Yeah, 1. Got another? 1. 1, okay. So automatically, this room's opinion about affordable housing, or housing in general, development near you is going to be colored by your situation. The people who are typically not benefiting from affordable housing are naturally not in this room. They are your friends and neighbors of not now, but five years from now, 10 years from now. I got up five years ago at Spring Town Meeting and submitted a warrant article to transfer ownership of 25 Worcester Street from the Town of Grafton to the Affordable Housing Trust for the purpose of building senior housing. That was five years ago. I was 44 years old. By the time that development is built, I will qualify for senior housing. That's how slow the pace of housing construction goes, and those of you in construction in the room know that, all right? The price of commodities is rising precipitously. The cost of land is rising precipitously. Those things are working against folks who need housing the most. Roger might not understand it. He just built... He cored off his land to build a McMansion next door. He didn't have to come to Town Meeting to ask for permission to do that.
Ed.
Okay, fine. Some people don't have to worry about it. Now, the reason why the Affordable Housing Trust needs money in that account now is because things come up. Opportunities arise for us to purchase land, to have land donated to us to fund projects. And it's not just construction projects. It's rental assistance. The last time there was a pandemic, we put out a questionnaire and a survey, applications for people to get rental assistance when they so needed it. Can you all really tell me right now that the world is in such a state where you cannot envision an emergency arising where someone might need rental assistance? So no, Roger, and those who feel like Roger, I don't want to have to come back here and run it through the town gauntlet about whether people less fortunate than you should have the opportunity not to live in fear of losing their home or not owning one to begin with. That is the purpose of the Affordable Housing Trust, to support, to maintain, and to build housing in this community. If you don't like that, come to our meeting. Come to ZBA. Come to Planning Board. There are plenty of opportunities to speak out against affordable housing. I assure you, I assure you. And there will be lawyers who will help you do it. I will beat every single one of them, okay? But to that end, yes, we do need the money. We are trying to stem the rising cost and the incredible, incredible burden of housing in Worcester County, which, by the way, is one of the most competitive rental markets in the entire country. Imagine it. You could be living in Orange County. You could be living in Maui. It would be almost as competitive as Worcester County, okay? Those are facts, not opinions. If anybody else wants any more housing facts, I'm sitting right over there. Come talk to me afterwards. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Prisby. Any other discussion on the motion? Ms. Ofton.
Laura Ofton, 79, Old Westboro Road. I just wanted to reiterate one point in case it got lost, is that you do have plenty of opportunities to come and speak your mind, as Mr. Prisby noted. There is a whole trust of people that have been appointed by our elected officials to manage this money, which is where it sort of differs from the church that we just approved about the same amount for. They don't have a body of people that have been appointed by our elected officials to spend the money, so they... It seems like it makes sense to have to come here. Our trust has the opportunity, they meet monthly at least, to talk about things and gives you an opportunity, and then they report into the Select Board. So I think we should trust our government as it is set up for us. So I will be voting yes to this and ask you to join me in voting yes, in case you really cared what I thought. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please press 1. All those opposed, press 2. Voting is closed. I declare the motion has carried, 135 to 47. Article 38 is a citizen's petition. With no affirmative action to be taken, we shall proceed to the next article. Before we proceed to the next article, which is the last article on the warrant, I want to take a moment to recognize the amazing, hard-working team of people who helped put this Town Meeting together. The Town Administrator's Office, Evan, William, Cindy, and Amber. The Town Clerk's Office, Amy Berry, and all of our election workers who did our registration and check-in. Our Select Board. The Finance Committee for reviewing and making recommendations on every single article. And I know that this year's budget process was long and marathon levels of meetings. One week, I think there were four in a week. And it's not gonna be any easier next year, so I do thank them so much for their time and their talent. Our Town... Sure, let's hear it from Finance Committee. Our Town Council, Chris Brown, for spending his Monday night with us. Grafton High School for hosting. Grafton Community Television for broadcasting and recording the event for anyone who wants to watch it later. I watch it later. Thank you, Bill and Bob. I'd like to... I'd like to thank, sorry, I have to go back because we had a last-minute change in our National Honor Society members who ran our microphones. Tonight was Johanna and Jocelyn. Don't forget to email me so I can send you your letter authorizing your hours. Grafton Middle School, thank you so much for supporting town meeting and encouraging our eighth graders to see local democracy in action. Congratulations again to Danica Conley, and thank you for stepping up and leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Speaking of our democracy in action, our local election is next Tuesday, May 20th. Please make a plan to vote. We have a lot of open positions, and I believe the Board of Library Trustees is looking for a write-in candidate, so this could be your moment. Last but not least, for the last few years, our Springtown Meeting has had a little something special to keep everyone engaged. And I want to sincerely thank the Chair of our School Committee, Amy Marr, for bringing bingo to town meeting. Thank you for your service on School Committee. Grafton has been very fortunate to have you advocating for our students. And I did find out on Saturday, when we were all at the Common for the Prom, that she did volunteer to continue making the bingo cards. So thank you so much. Now, our last article of the evening, Article 39. Will the sponsor of Article 39 please come forward?
Madam Moderator.
Ms. Roy.
I move to see if the town will vote to authorize the Select Board to petition the General Court of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts to enact special legislation to establish a means-tested senior citizen property tax exemption.
Motion made and seconded. Before I open this to discussion, Colleen will be making a brief presentation.
So what this is going to do is to create a senior property tax exemption for those who qualify. When I was previously on the Select Board, the number-one request I heard from our seniors was they needed tax relief, and that's really stuck with me throughout the years. Last fall, I was attending a neighboring town meeting, and they've been offering this exemption for a number of years, and I knew I needed to bring it to Grafton. The state has also been attempting to create such an exemption, but they usually have it lumped in with something else, which makes it hard to get it across the finish line. This will make Grafton a leader in offering this exemption to our vulnerable seniors, and we don't have to wait around for the state to get it figured out. What this will do is, correct, awesome. So this is the most recent data from the DOR. In 2022, there were 348 individuals who qualified for the senior circuit breaker income tax relief. What I'm proposing is going to be per household, but this is what it's based off of. So these numbers, there's a lot, but this is the number that the Select Board would annually use to determine what the exemption would be for qualified seniors. So based off this number, it would have been about $1,000 if they went for the full 100%. Next slide, please. If, using this data as well, the best estimate is that there's probably 125 households in Grafton that would qualify for this. If that was the case, and all 125 households who qualified and applied were eligible, and it was set at 100%, it'd be about $125,000 of relief that would be provided to our vulnerable seniors. This does not create a deficit that the town administrator would then need to find. What it does, it gets redistributed in the tax levy. Next slide, please. Just a reminder, the average home value in Grafton is $625,000. So at 100%, it would change the tax rate about three cents or about $18 a year to help 125 households get the tax relief that they would so desperately need. Now, for example, that neighboring community that I mentioned before, in the years that they've been offering it, which has been the last three, they saw 19 households, 16 households, and 24 households. So while I would love to see 125 households apply and get this relief, I really don't see that many applying right away. But you never know. That would be awesome if it did. But I imagine it would be less than $18 a year to provide the relief our seniors so desperately need. So I ask you to vote yes on this.
Thank you, Ms. Roy. Does anyone have any questions on this motion?
Good evening. Joseph Liu, Vincent Road. I just had a concern about Section 2, Subsection 4, where there is the restriction on this tax exemption for applicants who have owned and lived in Grafton for no less than 10 years. That seems excessive. I'm concerned that that's a little... Forgive me, I'm losing my words here. But yeah, I would just like to hear the rationale behind this 10-year restriction.
Ms. Roy.
Through you, Madam Moderator. So this is based off of language that's already been approved at the state? So I didn't want to reinvent the wheel. I wanted to know what the state would already approve.
Okay, so is it at the state level? It's a 10-year restriction on living in the same place? Or is it just what the state recommends per town?
So the state doesn't off, sorry, through you, Madam Moderator. So the state doesn't offer this exemption currently. This would be a local-level option. And the local towns that have passed this, this is the language they've used, and so that's the language I used.
Okay. Now, I do fully support it. I just would like to see that reduced or removed, but I will still support it.
I can offer a little clarity on that, and it goes along with what Colleen said. And I think there was information about this in the front of your warrant packets that you could collect when you came in. Everything we vote on at town meeting, from the smallest thing to the largest thing, is then sent up to the state and reviewed by the Attorney General. And in order to ensure that things don't get bogged down there, Colleen went out and found out what the other communities who have had this approved used as language so it doesn't get bogged down in that capacity. It's just best practice to kind of see the other paths that have gone before you and make sure that you're going down the right path. Thank you. Yes.
Kyle Watkins, 20 Trinity Ave. I just have some questions about specifically, like what other communities around us have this in place?
Other than Hopkinton, what other towns?
It's a great question. I don't know.
Excellent answer.
And then what is the current income tax credit threshold for subsection K of Section 6 of Chapter 62? That's referenced here. I know you're referencing the law. I just want some reference as to what that number is.
Okay, you said Section 3, Subsection K?
Subsection K of Section 6 of Chapter 62 of the General Law.
Okay, so that's within Section 3 of her...
Within Section 3 of the, of the...
Through you, Madam Moderator. Another great question. I don't know that off the top of my head either, but if you qualify for the senior circuit breaker income tax exemption, you're going to most likely qualify for this as well. And that information's available online. I just don't have it top of mind. I don't know if anybody else does.
I guess I can Google it then? That's fine. And then is there any limit on assets or the asset value of the home for those who qualify for this?
Yes.
Sorry, what is that limit?
I don't know.
All right. Well, I appreciate the spirit of this. I just wish we had a little bit more information that might help us budget such a large exemption going forward. But thank you for trying to answer my questions. Appreciate it.
Mr. Yeomans.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. I, Bill Yeomans, 297 Providence Road. I consider myself a senior senior at this point. And while I'm in favor of helping people stay in their property, be it a rental or a house that they own, my question is, as I read this and reviewed it for this meeting tonight, I came up with 30 pages of reference documents in mass state law. And I look at this write-up, and it goes to the Board of Assessors. And my question is, actually, two parts. What is in place if we were to pass this tonight? It's enacted instantly. It's not something that goes six months and gently gets enacted. I downloaded 30 pages of questions related to the references in the write-up for the town meeting this evening. And I don't think we have the capacity yet to answer the questions from the senior population in Grafton that's going to, you know, be curious about whether I can get an exemption. $1,000 for married individuals filing a joint return. I think the gates have to come down. It's not just 125 people that has been pointed out who will end up benefiting from this, but from a practical point of view, we have to staff it with people who can answer the questions of seniors who are, you know, confused, many of them. And I think that it's not fully thought out at this point, while I'm in favor of helping anyone that needs help. And seniors, being one myself, as I point out to my wife, the more, I'm the more senior senior, you know, running around, doing things. And I want to help out anyone that I can, but I also look at the practical side of it, and I don't want people to be frustrated trying to find out if they qualify for these exemptions. And it's based on the 30 pages of information that I started reading it, and I said, man, there's a lot. It's not just us enacting this law. It goes into effect as soon as the Attorney General approves it. So I question whether this is fully fleshed out to support this very gracious bylaw change. Thank you.
Madam Moderator, pointing of information. If this is passed tonight, it will not go into effect immediately. It specifically says it will go, the Select Board will petition the General Court, the state legislature, and it would go into effect after that, which is a long process.
Through you, Madam Moderator. And while I appreciate the super seniors' comments, there were some inaccuracies in those statements, like the Finance Committee member just said that it would have to go to the state for approval, and then after that, it would have to, you know, the assessor would have to create a process and an application. So we're not talking about this going into effect for FY '26, maybe not even FY '27, which is why voting yes on this tonight is so important to put us on the track to offer this exemption so that we can, you know, start offering this. Because as we've learned tonight on other issues, it takes a long time for things in the government to go into effect and start actually helping people, and this is the first step in that process.
Thank you. Mr. Marr.
Greg Marr, 36 Ferry Street. Actually, I was coming up to give the figures that Mr. Yeomans pointed out for the income, and then as he was speaking, I was going to point out the information that Mr. Kushner has provided for us. So I think that has covered everything I was here to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Cherylin Reno, 89 Keith Hill Road. I've been working out there in the halls, so I haven't been in here for the meeting. But it is very frustrating to me to come to yet another town meeting, and I've been coming to town meetings since I moved here in 2010, and have people speaking against a relatively revenue-neutral proposal that will help people in our community for the simple reason that they don't understand how it's going to work.
Mr. Jefferson.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Andy Jefferson, 31 Weston Street. I'd like to point out quickly that the senior circuit breaker amount, while Ms. Roy may not have that information present, is a set amount that seniors do tend to be aware of. And it was an easy way to tie into an existing prequalification that they would need in order to move this program forward. As Ms. Roy also pointed out, it can take years for the AG to enact things like this. You know, and I feel like we have people who speak out in favor of the feeling behind the article, but not the article itself without having done any outreach to discuss with the senior population, even if you, you know, tend to be a part of it yourself, talking to others about what's important to them instead of making that assumption for yourself. I would also point out that this is a starting point. This is something that, as Ms. Roy pointed out, the state has approved in other communities. It's something that we could choose to update in the future. Right now, at 100% adoption, we're talking at less than $20 annually, annually. That is a small number. I do not think that we should let good get in the way of perfect on this article. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the motion?
Michael Rock, A Trinity Ave. Just wanted to fill in some information about the circuit breaker qualifications for the state of Massachusetts.
Get a little closer to the microphone.
Income limit is $91,000 for head of household, $109,000 for married filing jointly. Yes, that is true. Your tax payments with half of water and sewer must exceed 10% of your income for the year. If you're renting, rent must be 25% of your annual income. And the assessed valuation of your house cannot exceed $1,172,000 for the circuit breaker to kick in. So there are guardrails on the circuit breaker. It's not that you can set up a trust fund and sort of weasel your way out of taxes for this. So I think that the guardrails on the circuit breaker clause are well-established.
Thank you. Mr. Ofton.
Madam Moderator, Matt Ofton. I'm at 79 Old Westboro Road. I think that this petition is well-thought-out. It mirrors, the language in it mirrors something that's already in the Municipal Empowerment Act, which was recently brought up by our governor. So it is, it also mirrors language that are from other towns. This article is very targeted for a population in Grafton that is much in need, and I'm in strong support of this. You know, this is something that tags on to other means-tested mechanisms that our assessors are already familiar with. So this is, to me, it's kind of a no-brainer. It does seem very well-researched. The presentation was very good, and I encourage people to support the article.
Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor, press 1. Voting is closed. I declare the motion has passed, 139 to 40. For those who had placed bets, it has been exactly 2 hours and 30 minutes since we began. I will entertain a motion to dismiss by voice vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? I declare the meeting dismissed. Good night, have a great summer, and please return your remote controls.